Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order at the Squim City Council. If everybody could please rise for the project allegiance. And the city clerk could please take role.
Counselor Kathy Downer here. Counselor Dan Butler.
Here.
Counselor Vicki Lowe here. Deputy Mayor Rachel Anderson present. Mayor Brandon Janice.
Present.
Counselor Harmony Rutter here. Mayor Counselor Tom Farrell.
Present.
Approve of the final agendas, are any changes to the final agenda? All right, see none. Go ahead and move on to item number five ceremonial. And there is one proclamation today in honor of Black History Month. I just want to thank those that also contributed to crafting, which will be Squim's first proclamation for Black History Month. Whereas America is a work in progress, continuously striving to be the land of liberty and justice for all. And whereas the 350 years long history of trafficking Africans to America for the purpose of enslaving them is a stain on those ideals. And whereas, beginning with the Emancipation Proclamation issued in January 1863, America has struggled to reconcile that stain. And whereas African Americans have given their lives to serve and protect the Constitution. And whereas the legacy of enslavement created a one dimensional narrative of the history of African American contributions to American history. And whereas Carter G. Woodson was a scholar who dedicated, whose dedication to celebrating the historic contributions of black people led President Gerald Ford to establish Black History Month in the bicentennial year of 1976, and celebrated each February since then. President Ford called upon all Americans to seize the opportunity to honor the too often neglected accomplishments of black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. And whereas we honor the struggle and efforts of black people in our community who have led efforts to bring about equality and justice, not only for their community, but for all marginalized peoples, including ensuring voting rights for those who had been historically excluded, desegregation, the right to marry whomever you love regardless of color of their skin, LGBTQ rights, disability rights, women's rights, healthcare advocacy and reform. And whereas the Black Panthers set up a model for school nutritional nutrition programs and community medicine and parent medicine. They helped create other national liberation movements that progressed the living conditions of their respective communities, such as Young Lords, Brown Berets, Young Patriots and American Indian Movement. Till this day, the black community is a leader in our nation's work on transforming this nation's policing and incarceration systems and diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging, DEIB, work on all levels of business and society. And whereas hip hop celebrates its 50th anniversary this year with roots in black communities, and now as much a part of American culture as rock and roll, other black created musical genre, another black created musical genre. Now therefore, I, Brandon Janice, Mayor of the City of Squim, and on the behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize February 2024 as Black History Month with the theme African Americans and the Arts. Sign this 12th day of February 2024. And before I invite Mr. Brown up to accept this, is there any comments from council?
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, and I'll invite Mr. Brown up if he has a few words he would like to say.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to thank the City of Squim, the mayor, the council for creating this proclamation. I got a call from Carlos Sarsario yesterday during the Super Bowl, and he asked me to receive this prestigious proclamation. Being a child of the civil rights movement, both my parents were active in Western New York during the 60s during the movement. So I kind of grew up in it. My mother was actually pregnant with me during the 1964. I don't know if they call it uprising, I don't know what they call it, but it was the very first civil rights uprising in the United States. It was in Rochester, New York. They did a PBS special. My father and my mother were there. And she was pregnant with me, I was born in 65. And the year I was born is the year that we got the right to vote. And so I grew up. And I believe that my 59 years living here is a testament to not only Dr. King's dream, but all of those who fought for equality. It's not just about black people. It's about all people. And so I've dedicated my life as a citizen and as an artist as well to bringing that to fruition. So I just want to thank everyone for this proclamation today. Thank you.
All right, moving on, item six, public comment. City clerk.
The public comment sheet will be collected for those attending in person. Comments will be taken, every other one, from those attending virtually, by phone or in person. For individuals attending in person, please take a moment to silence your cell phones. For those attending virtually or by phone, if you would like to provide public comment, please now press the raise your hand icon, or if on the phone, press star nine. Each person will have three minutes to speak on any topic, and there will be a timer visible on the screen. A total of 30 minutes will be permitted to provide comment. Please state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization. Again, for those of you virtual or on the phone, please now press the raise your hand icon or star nine. And Anthony, would you please start off with the virtual attendee?
We do not have anyone online asking to speak at this time.
All right, thank you. The first person is Norman Peterson, I believe.
Okay. So good evening, my name is Norman Peterson. I'm here for Habitat for Humanity. We wanted to take a minute. Colleen's been on the road, Washington DC, Houston, San Antonio. She's been all over the place and taking a day off. So we want to express our gratitude from the Habitat Board and the Habitat community for the effort that went in, and the leadership that went into getting us a chip grant for the worker housing over on South Squim Avenue. We do really appreciate Matt and his team making sure all the dots were done, eyes were out and the Ts were crossed. Make sure we're getting this project moving forward. We again want to remind everybody, this is for worker housing. This is for the electricians that keep our lights on, the plumbers that keep the water flowing, and the other stuff going in the right direction. Our HVAC techs who keep us warm in the winter, and more importantly, cool in the summer these days. Our medical technicians, young physicians, doctors, our first responders, fire, police, EMTs. We want them living in our community because this is where they're working. We want them living here. We want to make sure they've got housing then that they can live in. That is what makes a community, what makes a community great, is when we're all pulling together. Thank you again.
Just want to make sure that all the applause and everything underneath.
Anthony, do we have anyone online?
No online hands raised at this time.
All right, I will move through the list unless you let me know otherwise. Second person is Jeff Cole.
Hello. Hi, I'm Jeff Cole, and 577 West Squim Bay Road is my address. I am the heir to the Marcel Spath Estate. I abut the DOT mitigation site. So this is in reference to 7E and 7J of the agenda regarding the roundabout reclaim that you're doing and the water reclamation transfer. There is quite a history. Our property holds one of the rarest water rights in the United States. I've talked to water right attorneys all over the place. We hold a pre-certificat, pre-ditch water right going back to the 1800s. My aunt Marcel Spath was a proud pioneer family of Squim. She used to pick up trash on the way to John Wayne Marina. She'd walk along. She was a home ec teacher for Squim High School for 35 years. Her retirement gift from the City of Squim DOT water reclamation was basically to sue them for $125,000. At the same time, they filed an eminent domain to take half their property. It was a 120 acre farm. We currently have, or when I purchased the property from the estate, it was 60 acres, which represents about one quarter of the Sunrise District. It's a significant portion of the City of Squim. We're in the city limits. Though it was 24, 25 years ago in 98 that the property was taken through eminent domain, the Fifth Amendment assures that if a property is taken through eminent domain, that they must pay just compensation. They gave them $325,000 minus $125,000 fine minus the 100 and so thousand for the attorney fees, $90,000 for 60 acres in the city 25 years ago. The census data that is produced by the state of Washington and the United States is anywhere from 200 to 300% of an increase in property value. That would be saying that that property today is worth a million bucks or less. We know within two miles of that site, Lavender Meadows sold just within a year and a half ago for 25 million for 38 acres. Water rights historically are worth more than the value of the land. And we know that even though the statute of limitations on the DOT property would be up because it's 20 years for eminent domain statute of limitations, there is a pollution of the water right, which I am still on the DOT deed for the water that we own, the water right that we own, which is currently being polluted by the water reclamation site. So I am here to request and to make aware publicly to the mayor and to the council members, there's a solution. I would like your assistance in retaining that property back. I would like your assistance in either cleaning the mitigation site, return it to my water right. There's no way I can do this in three minutes. Is there any way I could get any more time to address you? I wrote a letter to the council. Did the council receive the letter through Sarah?
I received it, yes.
Okay. So what do you suggest? I know Christina has heard this over the years. This has been an ongoing issue.
Sorry, is the council okay with letting them continue a couple, a little bit more?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I purchased this property 10 years ago. I have only recently been aware of the water treatment pollution, which if you walk back in that property, I'd be happy to show you oil. In fact, not only the smell on the water right that's being produced through the water reclamation. Basically, the water treatment center takes our gray water, pumps it up by Kerry Blake Park, and uses our property as a filter, just like your car filter. When it's polluted, what do you do with it? It's no longer of use. And when you hold a historic water right, and since I purchased this property, my relationship to the City of Squim has just been one insult after the other. I requested a public information record request. I got three pages and they were redacted. And I don't quite know, I know Christine had told me at the time that I didn't ask correctly. But I'm here to say, how do we rectify the DOT? To put it in perspective, the Squim DOT property that we're talking about, the 60 acres that they took through eminent domain, because when the 101 bypass, Squim Dungeness bypass was cut in, they cut through an acre and a half of wetland. So to mitigate for that, they decided to do the eminent domain on the 60 acres or half of a three generation family farm. So by doing so, forgive me. This is my train of thought. The acre and a half that they took, they could have mitigated for that portion just by taking an easement along Bell Creek. Bell Creek runs through there, not as an actual creek, by the way. That's by definition. When they did the eminent domain, they wanted that as Bell Creek so that they could pump the gray water through it. Bell Creek actually runs through a different thing. And there's many maps that contradict each other. So did you?
You can finish your.
Okay, thank you. So what part of that letter that I requested is if instead of going through a costly mitigation, if they could put the easement on Bell Creek, an easement on the water reclamation pipe that they have, return the land, I'd be happy to give them. Because the money that they spent for the $325,000 would not even cover the easement for those two sections. I mean, we're talking about 60 acres. There's thousands of feet, linear feet. So if you take a 200 foot buffer, 100 feet on each side of Bell Creek, and you take a 50 foot buffer on each side, or a 15 foot buffer on each side of that pipe, it would still, even in 1998 values, wouldn't be enough to compensate for that. So I'm just asking your help. I'm wanting to make a request as a resident of this city to be able to rectify an injustice that was done and is currently being done. That's the thing.
I would just, yeah, make sure you keep up with Matt and Christina to help you with that one.
Well.
If they have any issues, just shoot me an email too and I'll see what I can do for you.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, I think staff would appreciate some direction on what exactly it is that you would like staff to address because it sounds like this was a Department of Transportation issue and not necessarily something that we could do on our own. So clarification would be appreciated.
I think prior, if you'll give us what is on your end first in whatever form.
Is there a letter and some background documents? Is that what you're looking for?
Anything that the city would have to inform council on this, if anything.
So I guess what are you asking? Are you asking staff to gather all of the information that we may have related to this? Or what? I guess I'm trying to understand what we need to do to help council and it's not entirely clear to me at this point.
Can I jump in there? I think what I would like is just a clearer picture. I understand your passion. I'd like a clearer picture, not necessarily going into a data dive for now. So that would be helpful to me.
So I only have one counselor on that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cole. We don't have back and forth conversation like this at a council meeting. We can't solve this tonight. But this council is very interested in learning the history of this, to see what happened, what didn't happen. Information on the city's side of it, and then we'll approach the Department of Transportation and get information from them before we sit down and talk about it. Is that fair with everybody?
We could also bring it up at open council discussion again.
Yes, we can bring it up at the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Can you tell me a year? When did this happen?
It was in 1998 that the Superior, it went to State Superior Court. So I mean, my aunt and uncle passed shortly after they received that ruling. I mean.
All right, I hate to interrupt, but do we have any more public comment? All right, if we could get to those, if it's all right with you, mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
Yeah.
I think it's Mark and S.I.K.A.S.
Good evening. My name is Mark Sykes. I live at 511 Knappman here in town. Been a resident for just over three years now. I come to you tonight in an effort to raise awareness for a need for adult educational opportunities. Last month, I attended a brief seminar that was presented by the Seroptimists and given at the Holiday Inn. The topic was human trafficking and the issues it was creating for local law enforcement. It was very well presented. I found it to be very educational and yet kind of uninspiring as it really wasn't a topic that I would have chosen. But sitting down at lunch following its conclusion made me wonder why we don't have more options for such educational opportunities, perhaps even some for them geared for life after 50. What I'm envisioning is something patterned after a TED Talk where we'd have, be offered in the afternoon once a month, last about 45 minutes with a 15 minute Q and A period following that. Light refreshments might be offered. And several local venues have already been suggested, and I've looked at two of them. Later, I compiled a list of topics that I thought might be informative and perhaps even instructive. While the subsequent list is varied, it's in no way complete and I'm open to suggestions of all the others. Some of those possible topics might be estate planning, history and storytelling by the Sklalum tribe, spring garden issues, the local historical society and the history of Klowam County, the role of the Chamber of Commerce in Squim, diabetic education, travel opportunities, various types of insurance programs, elder care, aging eye care, photography, local logging industry. Anyway, these are just a couple of suggestions and I'm sure that there's many, many more, a lot more interesting too. However, it's also important that we have a local speaker in mind for each subject and one who's well versed on their topic. I would be willing and eager to assist as a facilitator in the creation of this program. Thank you. Thank you for the work you do and making this a kind place.
Karen Hogan.
My name is Karen Hogan, and I'm going to give you my address, which should tell you something. 4294 Happy Valley Road in Squim. As the credits rolled at the end of Boys in the Boat, I felt like I had just seen the Squim Wolves JV team beat the Dallas Cowboys in the Super Bowl. It was very satisfying. And how about the Squim High School students who had the audacity to lobby for the movie to premiere in Squim? Not to mention the awareness they raised about the Joe Rantz Rotary Youth Fund, a fund for Squim's homeless youth. I'm imagining that they knew people in their peers who would benefit from that. They and Sunshine Rotary embrace their connection to their community. I think we can safely put to bed the narrative that Squim is a retirement community. Squim is a living, thriving village where we go about our daily lives, living our stories, stories that cover the human life experience from birth to old age. It takes a village to be a village. The business of the village, governance, is developing, maintaining and sustaining community. That has its own business model. It is complex because community is inclusive, with all being equal under the law. All have a voice that needs to be heard regardless of age, economic status, gender, race, religion or sexual orientation. I believe that the composition of this current council is well suited for making policies that develop, maintain and sustain our community. Four have deep roots in the community, including experience being a child in the community. Four have raised or are raising children in our community. Three who have more recently moved to Squim also bring a breadth of experience that provide a perspective on how police policies affect a community. And oh, how happy it makes me to see four women on the council. It was finding out, like finding out that Costco sells leggings with pockets. Women are practical, that's why we want pockets. Four years ago, an outside agitator created a narrative that Squim was Mayberry, a fictional town in 1960s black and white sitcom, under attack by the tribe that was so intent on taking over the town they might change the name Squim to a Sklalum name. It was a rather rough four years. I think we're on the other side of it. If we want to model our town after one in a television show, I'd like to suggest Sicily, Alaska, from the 90s show Northern Exposure. It has a diverse population with indigenous culture woven into the tapestry. When Joel, the New York Jewish doctor's uncle died, and he wanted to recite the Kaddish prayer in his honor, he thought he needed 10 Jews to sit with him. Jews were hard to find in Sicily and surrounding areas. In the end, he understood that the purpose of the 10 Jews was to provide community for his broken heart. He realized he was a part of a community, Sicily, and asked the residents to open their hearts to his broken heart as he recited the Kaddish to honor and mourn his uncle. Community, it takes a village to be a village.
Vicki Maples.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Maples, 932 East Cedar here in Squim. This is my first year as director of the Squim Irrigation Festival. So on behalf of the festival, I want to thank you for your past support. We truly appreciate the council and the staff. I hail from two pioneer families. My mother was a festival princess back in the 1940s. And my grandfather and great aunts and great uncles were also honored pioneers. So you can see the festival is very close to my heart. We're right on the verge of launching the 129th Squim Irrigation Festival. And it begins with the royalty scholarship pageant, which is on February 24th. Our kickoff dinner and float reveal would be on March 23rd. And then our two weekends of the festival would be May 3rd through the 11th. We're culminating with the grand parade on the 11th. I have some reminder cards here for you. We'd like to encourage you to be at as many of those events as you can. Tickets will be coming available very soon for the kickoff dinner, and they're also available for the pageant. I'm including my business card, so if you have any questions at all, please let me know. I also have on here some information about our Arts and Crafts Festival. We'd like to encourage as many local artisans and crafters to be vendors at our festival. We'd really like to support them. So in conclusion, I just want to thank you again for all of your support and look forward to working with you again this year. So thank you.
Mary Bell.
Well, I was in Pioneer Park today walking my dog, and for the first time, I saw two poison hemlock. So I know that Tyler Brown is doing everything he can to deal with it. It's becoming really rampant. And he said to contact him, and I did. And the two helpers came and they sprayed it and posted it. So we need to be aware, we need to know what it is, and we need to get help when we see it.
Dale Jarvis. Dale Jarvis.
Hello, everyone, my name is Dale Jarvis, I live at 143 Lakeview Drive. I'd like to add to Karen's comment, a kudos for the two young women who are youth liaisons to the city council. Thank you. Earlier this month, the City of Squim and Habitat for Humanity showed the community what can happen when local leaders put their shoulder into a project. In this case, the planning and support for local affordable housing. I'm talking, of course, about the $2 million chip grant that was awarded to the City of Squim and Habitat to develop, help develop the multifamily affordable housing project on Bronfield and South Squim Avenue. You may not know it, but there was only $55 million available for but $79 million of funding requests, and we thought that, well, maybe the city in Habitat would get half of their $2 million requests. No, the project was so strong that the project, the funding, it was fully funded, which I think is a real tribute to the hard work of city staff, city council, the work that the council did on passing legislation to support this, the enabling legislation. So I want to thank everybody for that. And last but not least, I'd like to urge the city council to see this as an important first step in the work you're doing around affordable housing. I'm thinking in particular about the April city council retreat that's upcoming. And the work that you're going to be doing, I'm sure, to build further on affordable housing planning and work as you look forward to the 2025 Comprehensive Plan. I specifically, I'm thinking about chapter six of the Comprehensive Plan, which is the housing chapter, which has some really great goals, but no specific objectives, no measurable deliverables, no metrics. And without those things, you really don't have a plan. So I know that this is a great group of folks, and I'm counting on you to add more, more beef to that chapter. Thank you very much.
That's all for in-person public comment. Anthony, did anyone raise their hand online?
Still no raised hands online.
All right, that concludes public comment.
All right, moving on, item seven, consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda?
Claim vouchers totaling $1,997,798.40. City Council meeting minutes from January 22nd, 2024. Coordinating Low-Income Housing Planning Grant, CLHIP, a letter of support. Climate Resilience Collaborative Proposal, a letter of support. Water Reclamation Facility Property Exchange. SMC Updates to Chapter 2.60, Emergency Management. SMC Updates to Chapter 3.78, Guarantees and Bonds. SMC Updates to Chapter 8.20, Fireworks and Sky Lanterns, An Ordnance, Janitorial Contract for Your Girl Friday, Broadmoor Roundabout Quick Claim, Extension of Clallam County Fire District 3 Interlocal Agreement, and Squim Bay State Park Contract.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
And I will second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion from council?
My question is about item E and J. Do we need to retake those down? And I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I mean, if they have to do with the ongoing situation with the Cole Farm? I mean, I, when I was reviewing them, they seemed to be straightforward in my, in my estimation of reading through them, but we've had some concerns brought. I, correct me if I'm wrong, other thoughts here?
I'm supportive of approving the consent agenda and then working on that when we get to it later.
Where, where's J?
Under consent agenda.
Oh, seven. Got it.
Yes, it sounds like there, these are, that just because we approve them on the consent agenda doesn't mean that they're, they're not something that we can adjust later on. So I thank you, I defer to your leadership and expertise on this, thank you.
Anything else from council?
Did you get your question answered? Because they can be removed from the consent agenda, and we can vote on them separately. She wants to know if she can ask questions about them without removing them from the consent agenda.
I just don't think we have enough information to move forward on what was brought up at public comment until a later date, most likely. So I guess I'm just trucking along as it would be a normal meeting, if that makes sense.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, anything further from council?
Yeah, I'd like, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Vicki.
No, go ahead, Tom.
I'd like to talk a little bit more about that. And I'm going to refer over to Christina, is there, if we approve the consent agenda, are we locking something that might be interfering with our future chronology information?
That's what I'm concerned about.
So I guess what, before I answer your question, just one point of order for council's consideration. Council has already approved the final agenda as provided, so there is that. But, and I'm looking for Sarah, who, oh, there she is, she is here. So I can tell you that my understanding of the WRF land swap and the Broadmoor quick claim has nothing to do with that in their individual capacities. Now, the things that Mr. Cole is talking about, it is my understanding that they're unrelated to this, and if council chooses to have staff look into that, then obviously, you know, we would work with the city manager on making that happen. But based upon my understanding, and I see Sarah at the podium, so she can speak to this clearer, but it's my understanding they're very separate items.
Well, if they're very separate, I'm okay with just proceeding as we approve the final agenda anyway, but I'll leave that up to Sarah to talk.
I agree with that, and I just want to go ahead and say that Mr. Cole is in agreement with item 7J. He's agreeing to do that little swap of the monument for the Cole family farm. So, and then the purchase of land, the WRF is not doing anything different than it currently does. It's just acquiring more land.
And I would just add, if it wasn't clear from the materials, that that land that we are acquiring is not here. It is down adjacent to the WRF.
Okay, you've answered my questions. Are you okay with that?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, council.
Did you have a sound, Councilor Lo? Okay. Any opposed to the motion to approve the consent agenda? See, and none, motion passes. All right, moving on to item 8A. Moratorium on Application and Permits is a public hearing. And before we start after this item, we will take a five-minute break. So before we open the public meeting, the clerk will read the com, the comment instructions.
Soon the mayor will open the public hearing and take comments from people attending virtually and in person. If you are in person and would like to provide public comment, please sign on, sign in on the public hearing sign-in sheet. If you are attending virtually via Zoom and wish to provide public comment, press the raise your hand icon, or if you are on the phone, press star nine when the mayor asks for comments. Then when the last four digits of your phone number are called out at the appropriate time, unmute your audio by dialing star six. Then state your name and city or county of residence. Comments are limited to three minutes, and there will be a timer visible on the screen. Please avoid comments not related to the subject of the hearing. Participants will be disconnected after speaking. Again, please raise your hand or press star nine when the mayor calls for public comments.
Okay, again, the subject of this public hearing is the update regarding the moratorium on applications and permits for the redevelopment of mobile home and manufactured home parks. I'm going to open this public hearing, does the city manager or staff have testimony?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you can see, we have both Sharice and Kim, who is our consultant, working with our DCD on this matter, so I would like to defer to probably Sharice to then take it from here and to introduce Kim. Thank you.
Greetings, Council, members of public, staff. Yes, I'm here tonight, Sharista Shanes, for the record, Deputy City Manager, Community and Economic Development Director, with Kim Mahoney, she is Principal Planner with LDC. They are working with us to do planning consulting related to on-call planning services. And tonight, we are both here to present what's been happening with the moratorium that's been in place for about six months now, give you an update, and hold public hearing, and ask for an extension of that moratorium. I'm going to turn it over to Kim, we do have a PowerPoint presentation for you, and we are here to entertain any questions following the presentation. Kim?
Thank you, Sharice. Good evening, Council. I've got the presentation to give you, to give to you tonight pulled up, I just want to make sure that it's showing on the screen for you now.
Yes.
Everybody can see, okay, thank you very much for confirming. As Sharice indicated, my name's Kim Mahoney, I'm the Principal Planner with LDC. She and I have been working closely these last four months to be able to work through the moratorium and swim on mobile home and manufactured home parks. And tonight, we're here to be able to provide an update to the public and to the council on the work that we've been doing over these last six months, and culminate in a request of council to extend the moratorium by another six months. We have a work plan prepared and findings of fact that have been prepared and suggested, and an ordinance that is included in the agenda packet tonight for the council's consideration. I have a couple slides here that address the background of the moratorium work that we've been doing so far. You can see that in June, there was clear direction that was provided to staff from council to work on and address of the mobile home and manufactured home park overlay, and to also consider other options outside of work that could be done to the zoning code or the comprehensive plan to address the matter at hand. A formal ordinance was adopted by council on August 14th that established the moratorium and put it in place for six months, which ends on February 14th, two days from now. That ordinance and moratorium has a state mandated requirement for a public hearing to be held within 60 days, which was done so by this council on September 25th. And following that public hearing, city staff brought a number of options to the planning commission to be able to begin an exploration and active collaboration with the planning commission in Squim on the variety of ways in which it could address the moratorium. We researched five options and brought those in a series of meetings to, with advanced, advancing degrees of, of depth in the research and its implementability within the community, and those five options are listed here. The first is to revise the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, the second is to either adopt a new zone or a zone overlay or zoning code language. The third was to adopt a tenant opportunity to purchase ordinance. The fourth was relocation assistance and anti-displacement options, and the fifth was an establishment of some sort of housing authority or potential manufactured home, of, for, for manufactured home parks, or otherwise support some sort of resident-owned community or buyback program or nonprofit preservation organization. Following that initial presentation to the planning commission in November, staff distilled or furthered its research on each of the five and brought those back on December 5th to the planning commission. And we learned that evening of a more distilled list that the planning commission wished to be able to ask staff to research further, and those were options 1, 2, 3, and 5. Further research on those options and how it is that those options could be implemented into Squim were brought to the planning commission on January 2nd, and we took more direction from planning commission in a really collaborative, engaged discussion to be able to, to explore kind of the realistic implementation of each option, intending to bring that back to the planning commission on January 16th. However, of course, weather hit in a tremendous way in Squim on that day, and that planning commission had to be pushed back until February 6th. In the interim, or between those two dates, Sharice and her staff arrived to the city council on the 22nd of January to provide an update on the moratorium and a work plan. And just last week, we came back to planning commission. We presented more research and a bit more strategy around the preferred options that we'd understood so far. We'd also reasoned the removal of option three, which was the tenant to opportunity, tenant opportunity to purchase ordinance, referred to as a TOPO. We reasoned the removal of option three from further consideration based on our own read of state law and our work with the city attorney and the MSRC, which is the municipal research sort of organization, intended to be a bit of a resource for communities and city staff to be able to understand whether or not the RCW was truly applicable in that the, the attempt to be able to adopt a TOPO was something to be left to the power of the state and not to be adopted by the city. All of that collaboration with city attorney and MSRC agreed that that was how that RCW should be, or should be interpreted, and so we reasoned the removal of option three from further consideration. At that meeting, at last week's meeting, the planning commission agreed with the removal of option three from further, from further consideration, and asked us to continue our research into realistic implementation of options 1, 2, and 5, and particularly, particularly noted the importance of options 1 and 2. Again, we're here tonight because to be able to continue this fairly rigorous exercise, we need more time to be able to research the implementation of these options and make some, have some more engagement with the planning commission, receive their recommendation, bring that to this council. And so in accordance with RCW 36.78.390, we are requesting that the council approve a six-month extension of the moratorium at tonight's public hearing. We've prepared a work plan, we've outlined, outlining our related studies necessary to inform or resolve of the moratorium, and ordinance has been drafted for council's consideration to adopt tonight, and that, that ordinance does include findings of fact. This slide outlines our work plan. And the important thing here is that it outlines how it is that we're going to move through an iterative involved public process involving the planning commission and the city council, all while doing our administrative due diligence, working through SEPA and the intent to adopt with the Department of Commerce by August 2024, which is, of course, when this moratorium, if it is extended tonight by six months, would expire. And so we're just going to continue to evaluate approaches to implement the preferred options that we've discussed so far with the planning commission, until it gets to a point that we have drafted language to be able to bring to the planning commission for their recommendation to city council. All of this, of course, being held at public meetings or hearings to engage and involve the contributions of the public and the Squim community. After we receive the direction from city council and planning commission, we'll move through the SEPA determination and the intent to adopt with the Department of Commerce, and culminate, of course, with a public hearing at council that leads to the adoption of proposed changes. I've also been asked to provide a little bit of a summary on some recent Senate and House bills that are moving through committees right now at the state. House bills that are moving through committees right now at the state level that are related to the manufactured home and mobile home park preservation. Senate Bill 5961 and House Bill 2114 are, as of today, still in committee, both in the House and in the Senate. Neither has been passed. Both are still being reviewed and deliberated within their respective houses. The Senate bill and the House bill are duplicative of each other, although there have been some recommended amendments to the Senate bill that are being considered. But in general, each of the bills addresses this bulleted list of, you know, potential addresses of mobile home and manufactured home and in general tenant protection rights within Washington State. And these include, again, generally speaking, a limit on rent and fee increases, requiring notices or requiring notice of rent and fee increases. I'm sorry, there's a typo there on that second one. Limiting fees and deposits, establishing landlord resource centers and associated services, authorizing tenant lease terminations, creating parity between lease types, and then, of course, providing for Attorney General enforcement to be able to ensure that there are, there's some sort of teeth to the discussion of the House bill and the Senate bill. Again, these are both currently in committee. Neither one has been passed and both are still being considered for adoption. With that, we hope tonight to be able to receive the council's motion to adopt findings of fact that are provided in the ordinance in your agenda packet, allowing a six-month extension of our current moratorium. That would allow for staff to proceed with our work plan, continue our diligent effort with the Planning Commission, city council, and the SWIM community, and then come back to hold a public hearing with this council and adopt recommended options in August of this year. At this point, I welcome any questions from the council.
Kim, I wanted to add before we went to council, just some information that we've been reaching out to the public. There's been a lot of local residents and attendants at the Planning Commission meeting and also through phone calls and questions that way. So just letting the council know that there's that activity going on in the community and we have a lot of interest from our public. But yes, I will turn it over to questions as well. Thank you, Kim.
Hi, Sharice. This is Tom. This thing has a lot of merit to it, but I got to ask, is this costing a fortune?
Is it costing?
For the legal support?
Well, I mean, we are, we are working together with our consultant, but our consultant is here to assist us with many different on-call items. So I don't know how to answer that question other than.
Okay, I'm just, I want to make sure that budgetary-wise, we're not in for a huge surprise here.
No, we're not in for a huge surprise. We're doing fine within our budget.
That's all I needed to hear. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman Butler. I just want to express appreciation particularly to you, Kim. This is a very clear presentation, lays it out clearly. It helps me understand the issue being a new council, but also just the plan forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you, council member. I appreciate your feedback.
Any other questions from council? Okay, we will now move on to public comment. And this is a public hearing, so all audience members wishing to make comment will be allowed three minutes to speak. When it is your turn to speak, please give your name, address, and whether you reside within the city limits of SWIM. Please avoid repetitious comments, personal attacks, or comments not related to the subject before the council. And city clerk, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak?
We have two in person. Anthony, do we have anyone online?
Yes, we do. Ms. Coons, you may now unmute your microphone and you may address the council.
Hi. Oh, I didn't know I'd be first. Thank you so very much. My issue is the solid waste increases that we've recently experienced in SWIM. And my name is Kimberly Coons.
This is a hearing on the mobile home park.
Exclusively tonight? Oh.
Yeah.
I misunderstood. Okay. Well, I wish them the best and I'll be quiet then.
Yeah, feel free to email council or next meeting for public comment.
I have, and I was told by one of them, oh, you should just come. And I thought I'd do it by Zoom. Isn't there normally, is this just so intense that you guys need that open time, et cetera, and then you're going to vote on it tonight? It sounded like I may have picked the worst night as well.
Yeah, no, we had public comments a little bit earlier in the evening, but yeah, this is strictly for mobile home park and the extension of the moratorium.
Being late and I'll try another week. Bye-bye.
Doug Wright.
I said, how do I follow that? Doug Wright, Hendrickson Community, SWIM. First of all, thanks to council, Planning Commission, hardworking staff, my best wishes to Sharice, she knows why, and congratulations, Mike. Good choice. I didn't bring anything. As you see, I didn't prepare anything, so it should be short and sweet. I imagine that you folks look out on this full house, and there's some in the lobby too, if you haven't noticed. And you see a bunch of seniors that are hoping for certain things to happen. We all know what that is. That's why we're here. When I look out here, that's not what I see. I was trying to think, no, what could I say here? What I see is hope. I see seniors with hope, finally, because something's been done to help alleviate the fear they live with every day. But that's pretty neat. I hope you realize that. The stress that some of these people live under, I've heard the stories, it's just amazing. And we all know stress will kill you. Any stress you can relieve, it's not hyperbole. You can actually extend the lives of some of the people in this community. And this is a small group. There are hundreds out there. A lot of them can't even be here. Other than that, that's about it. Like I said, nothing prepared, short and sweet. What you're doing has been great. Everybody has been willing to listen, learn, work for the same goal. And I think if we continue this, it'll be something that has never been done in SWIM or on the potential, and it'll only be the first of many, hopefully. And SWIM will set the precedent. And other than that, for a Southern guy, just get her done. Thank you.
Anthony, is there anyone online?
No one at this time.
Annette Hansen.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and staff. Appreciate this opportunity. Following Doug, I just basically want to encourage you to extend the moratorium. I attended the Planning Commission meeting or work session last week, and I was really impressed by all the hard work so far that our staff has been doing to find solutions for this within our city limits. And I know they need the extra time. And since it currently ends on Valentine's Day, what a better Valentine to give than an extension to everyone so they can complete their work. I know, because I've been sending emails to the state for 5961 and the other one in the House to our representatives and senator. And I know that you as council, other than Brandon, I know has been working on that too, and many of you may have also, but we can do something here. And that's all we can focus on right now until the state steps up and does something. I know, I live in Hendrickson Heritage Park on Heritage Loop for three years now. And I know that I'm fortunate. I live where I live. It's affordable housing. And I don't think anyone has other development plans at the moment for it. But I looked into who now owns our, our land. It's like around 5.6 acres and it's designated as one piece of land. Yet I think there are currently about 68 homes or 67 parcels within that 5.6 or seven acres. Because I tried to find where my little slot was and it doesn't exist. It's just one picture. And I looked at what the new limited owner owns and what they pay in property taxes and compared that to their increases and compared to our rent increases on our land. And my rent in the last three years has increased 51% on just my little tiny parcel where my home is. And I'll tell you, if you looked at the profits that those people are making, it's outrageous. And so anything we can do locally to help protect us small manufactured home, trailer homeowners is greatly appreciated. So I'm thankful that the Planning Commission is doing what they're doing and staff. So please do extend the moratorium. Thank you.
Anthony, last call for anyone online?
No takers at this time.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, I will now close the public comment portion of the hearing. And I want to thank everybody that signed up to give public comment. Is there any council discussion?
Just a quick comment to say that a lot of the time, I don't think our staff and our Planning Commission, I don't think that they get enough credit. And along with our consultant too, who I bet has worked just as hard as everybody else has on this item. And so I just want to say thank you so much for putting in all the time and effort. It is so, so worth it. So thank you.
Brandon, I'd like to move the motion unless there's a legacy council member who would like the privilege of doing that.
Let me, let me close it first. Anybody else have any comments before then? Okay, the public hearing is now closed and we can move on to council action.
Okay. I would like to move to adopt ordinance 2024 hyphen blank, extending the moratorium adopted by council's passing of ordinance 2023 hyphen 014 on the redevelopment of mobile and manufactured home parks and direct staff to return with draft materials implemented, recommended approaches to the preferred options as deliberated with and recommended by the Planning Commission.
I would like to second that motion. Be you.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, CNN, any opposed? CNN motion passes and we are at recess for five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
All right, welcome back. We'll move on to item 8B. This is a code update for SWIM municipal code, chapter 15.04, building codes. First touch, Mr. Joel.
Hello, Joel Russell, building official and fire marshal. So tonight I'm presenting SWIM municipal code title 1504, building code updates, along with some ancillary code updates. These were presented to Planning Commission at the February 6 meeting, and they recommended to bring to council. So currently, we're under the 2018 Washington State Building Codes and are anticipating that Washington State will implement the 21 building codes on March 15th. There is possibility, just so you're aware, that the state building code council made away the date of adoption due to some legal uncertainties with the energy code and the wildland urban interface code. They were supposed to be adopted July 23, already been pushed October and then pushed to March. So we'll see. But we'll address that when we draft the ordinance, stating something to the effect that the 21 building codes will be adopted and the SWIM municipal code is adopted by the state of Washington. So some of the other local updates to title 1504 include requiring all businesses to have a current certificate of occupancy, allowing the use of stock plans, change in the expiration date of over-the-counter permits and clarifying fees. So the ancillary code changes to title 1859 and 2001, remove some restrictions for accessory structures, remove the review timeline restrictions for building permits and site construction permits, and establish a timeframe for payment of permit fees. So staff recommends this item be set for a public hearing at the next city council meeting on February 26th. And if you have any questions, we have to answer.
Questions from council?
This is for my education, Joel. Thank you for this. I understand from the presentation that we don't have an option. There aren't any updates here that we have any option or control over, is it?
Some of the local updates that we're doing, you would, as far as the 21 building code updates were stuck adopting with the, with the state's adopting.
Right. So the public hearing would be on those items that are more local? Is what your?
The public hearing is on the whole adoption, although that, yeah, we won't be able to change that. The Washington State building codes per RCW were required to administer those codes. So.
For purposes of the record, Christina Nelson-Gross, city attorney, excuse me, for clarification for development regulations like building code updates and things like that, we are required under the Growth Management Act to have public hearings for development regulations, and this would qualify as a development regulation. So while it may not allow a lot of opportunity for changing what is in the state mandated building code, we are nonetheless required to have one.
Any other questions, comments from council? None. There is a motion.
I'm prepared to make a motion. I move to direct staff to schedule a public hearing on this matter in the regular manner at the next city council meeting, please.
I second that.
Been moving and seconded. Any additional comments, questions from council? Any opposed to the motion? All right. CNN motion passes. All right. Thank you. All right, item 8C, there's another code update. SWIM municipal code, chapter 17.04, dedications, first touch. Sharice?
Greetings again, Council. Sharice DeShanes, Deputy City Manager, Community and Economic Development Director, for the record. Yes, tonight I have a very quick presentation for you regarding 1704, the general provisions in title 17 regarding subdivisions. And there's a section in there that we've added that prepare, we've prepared some guidelines for standard land use certifications, dedications, and declarations that will ensure consistency in the specification of the purpose of each easement created by a plat or binding site plan. Historically, we have not provided standards to the development community. And many times we come across plats or binding site plans that have unclear language or earnest language or that cause some inconsistencies in the application of those documents. And so we worked together with our staff, with our consultant groups. We've looked at other municipalities and their codes that they have and have come up with a great set of guidelines. We presented this to Planning Commission on the 6th of February and they recommended that with a vote of 5-0, that council approve the proposed additions to SMC 1704 and the guidelines for standard land use certifications, dedications, and declarations. And tonight, staff is requesting that you either schedule a second touch of the matter or direct us to prepare an ordinance for the consent agenda. I'm prepared to answer any questions, but that concludes my presentation tonight.
Questions or comments?
I'm quite happy to move to wave the second touch. I'm wondering about the assumption that it'll be on a consent agenda before we've... I'm just kind of wondering about that step of the process. Could it just be a wave the second touch and bring it back to the next meeting?
I think that is one of the... Are you concerned about it going on the consent? You don't want it on the consent?
Well, I guess if it comes on the consent agenda, we see it ahead of time and we've got questions about it, we pull it off the consent agenda. So I think I just answered my own question. So I moved to wave the second touch on this matter.
There's a motion.
I second it.
It's been seconded. Any further discussion?
Should we add on record and direct staff to present an ordinance on the consent agenda at the next meeting? Just so it's extremely clear.
Clarity is kindness. Thank you. First up.
Would you be willing to amend your motion?
I am sorry, Rachel, I was distracted and I didn't hear what you suggested.
So you had motion to waive the second touch, but we also need to add direct staff to present it as an ordinance on the consent agenda at the next meeting, just so everything's crystal clear.
Absolutely.
I second it again.
Anything further from council? Any opposed? CNN, motion passes.
Thank you, council.
All right, item 8D, Squimmin Municipal Code update to Chapter 12.30, development reimbursement repeal.
Good evening, council. Sarah Van Oostel, Public Works Director for the record. And this agenda item is yet another code update in our continuing effort. And this one is a very basic one as well. The executive summary says it all and that is just that Title 1230 simply directs readers to Title 13, specifically 1398. And so we believe that that reference is simply confusing and unnecessary and we would move to strike it. And I will say that staff is currently beginning the review of Title 1398 developer reimbursement agreements. So we should be bringing that to you shortly for our suggestions and modifications on that. So staff's request this evening is to waive the second touch on the matter and prepare an ordinance to be available at the next meeting.
Questions, comments?
I'm prepared to make a motion. I move to waive the second touch on this matter and direct staff to prepare an ordinance repealing SMC Chapter 12.30 for the consent agenda at the next available meeting.
I second that.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Any opposed? CNN, motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, item 8E, council retreat review.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. As you will recall from the cover, agenda cover sheet, we are following council's lead relative to your interest in moving forward with a retreat and trying to support you in some of the logistics relative to that. And Marin is here to walk through survey one and survey two, but mostly I will just kind of preface that with what we found, even though the first survey had a lot of questions and input from you. The result of that in your discussion following that survey, you really only kind of moved or took action on two of those. One was it be six hours and two that it be here in the chambers. There were a lot of other things that had either more than four votes or whatever, but it wasn't really decided. I guess I'll turn it off without taking whatever you want to talk about. But we do have, we've done a second survey and we just need to kind of move this forward. So I will be here and as will Marin to help guide your conversation relative to your retreat.
Thank you, council. Marin Packer, Executive Assistant in the City Manager's Office. And so according to survey number two, the general consensus for a date for the city council retreat that worked for the most people was April 1st of this year, which is a Monday and not a council night. We still need direction on selection of an external facilitator, which was decided upon by council. And then if you go to the agenda cover sheet, I've laid out items A through H on the second page that staff is still seeking direction on. Or if you would prefer to leave the goals and the agenda topics to discussions with an external facilitator, we can receive that direction to hold that information for them as well.
Thank you so much, Marin. Did you say A through H or did you, or one through eight?
That got changed in the transition to a PDF. So it was A to H on our copy, but if you look at the PDF, it's in the packet, it's one through eight. Yes, thanks for that clarification.
No worries. Thank you. Just making sure I'm on the same page as y'all.
I was too. I was thinking, wait a minute. But yes, that was just a translation in the formatting between the two different types.
One more time, what was it you needed again from us other than facilitator?
Yeah, so we need to officially decide on a date. According to consensus, if we just start there and I can keep moving as we go along. According to consensus, the date that worked best for the most council members was Monday, April 1st.
Have car on Monday, but Rachel's going to drive me.
I'll pick her up.
That's why.
Is there anybody that April 1st does not work for them? This might be a faster way to get it.
Thank you, Rachel. We just need a discussion. Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
April 1st works for me. I have already put it in my calendar, if that is helpful.
Are you in agreement on that one?
Thank you. Some additional direction that staff needs is according to consensus on survey number one, it was that you would allow public comment to be heard during the retreat. Is that something you would still like staff to make amendments for?
I don't remember doing that last year, did we?
No. There was nobody there to give comment anyway.
We didn't have as much time last year.
I would also say that if we do have public comment, if we could limit it to kind of like at the beginning of these meetings, if everyone, I don't know if anybody will have a different opinion, but if it's like this meeting where we limit it to 10, 10 comments or 30 minutes, I think that could be beneficial.
I like that idea at the beginning. So that way we can hear before we work on.
I'm fine with that.
Everybody okay with that?
Thank you. Another item that we need a direction on was agenda items to be presented during the city council retreat. It was suggested to present the recent community survey, the comprehensive plan review.
Brandon? I thought we asked for the survey ahead of time so we could review it. I didn't know that we need a presentation on it if we can review it ahead of time.
Well, not only will, I think we're actually going to present it in a formal meeting before then, but it sounded like you wanted to talk about what was presented to you prior amongst yourselves. So that won't be the first time. It's just an agenda item. And hopefully either you or some staff will be available to use the interactive software that we purchased as well to slice and dice that data, should you wish to look at it differently.
Another topic that we need a direction on was the attendance of senior management staff to be present during the city council retreat, including your city manager.
I thought the majority of us answered no.
According to consensus on survey number one, consensus was not to be present from four to two.
Everybody okay, still okay with that? Okay.
All right. And then another item was the selection of an external facilitator.
That was confusing because the survey didn't tell us what our choices were.
So.
On the survey. So I just ordered, I just answered that it didn't matter to me.
Right. So we had no proposed facilitators for survey number one except for conversations in council. For survey number two, the results were some suggestions included, sorry, Aperture EQ, Profound Results, Jurassic Parliament, Burke Consulting, the Morahondo Group.
Well, I believe in survey one, we recommend, we had three that staff recommended that we had experienced using. And I think amongst yourselves, you chose not to use those three. And then we asked again in survey number two and out of the seven of you, I think we have five different choices. So we're not sure what to do with that.
Was there the option of who, that person that did does the eval?
So thank you for remembering that. This is a conversation we had at Agenda Planning. So again, a professional named David Mercier, who is doing the city manager evaluation. It is an extension of what he does for cities and he finds in many places it being very useful as he guides council through a process or a methodology and then can tie the city manager evaluation the next year to what he helped the city council formulate. However, since that agenda planning meeting, as I reached out to him to find out, is he still doing this? How often does he do this and whatnot? He sent us an email, the city an email saying he respectfully declines because he saw the survey results and said if the senior management team is not there, his methodology wouldn't work. He always tries to tie, he's got a way to tie them together and to not, to not have them participate with you, not to take time from you. But he surveys the senior management team prior and then surveys you and then shows you the results and then allows you guys to, he kind of directs you through an outcome, a deliverable. He thought that the four votes on the first survey that said, "Don't include senior management" meant four people were perhaps not supportive of senior management team. And I think, I don't think that was the intent. So I guess that might be reworded, but he thought if four of the council members, you know, really don't want them there or don't want me to participate in that, then... So I don't know if you want to revisit that, but that would have to happen if he wanted to use Dave Mercier.
Yeah, see, I like the idea because he's familiar with the city. But if his holdback is not being able to get input from seniors staff, I don't think that was the intent. I would accept something from senior staff, even if they weren't there. So if he wanted to do that and still present, and I'm okay with that if he was willing and council wanted to go that route.
And I think we're more worried about taking up their time than having them there, if I remember right.
Yeah, my vote was more like I didn't want the retreat to be a burden on staff. However, if Mr. Mercier is willing to do it, he already knows context of the city. And if his methodology includes the senior management team, I think that could be really beneficial to get everybody on the same page and some really good team building, which I'm always supportive of. And so I'd just be really supportive of having senior management team there and having Mr. Mercier facilitate.
In my conversations with them, it wouldn't be a senior management team taking any time in the agenda. It was just that he could survey them and he could share some input from them. We still plan on being, you know, silent and less called upon and sitting around on the back row or whatever. It's not our retreat. So we appreciate and understand that, but he just...
So with Rachel's comment, I'm not sure how you want to readdress senior management team being in attendance because that would flip the consensus.
We could just vote on it right now, Ken.
Well, I think. Well, I think is it?
It wasn't a formal.
He just wants to survey senior staff, right? That's what he thought we weren't allowing? Is that correct?
His methodology for pulling off a successful retreat with council is to include senior management through a survey process and through some pre-work and then not sharing that until after you do the exact same pre-work and then sharing that with you so you can see where you align with us and then letting you take it over. So it was just that piece. But really, if you choose to include him, I still think you'll notice on the agenda cover sheet, what we're really hoping for is, I think it's been recommended by you all or maybe by somebody else that to move this along, you probably, an option would be to pick two or three of you to make some of these decisions, probably to meet with David Mercier or see if he's, if he's still, if his methodology works for what you want and for staff to kind of step aside and let you run with that. So he is one option, but then there's five other ones that you all came up with. I don't know how you're going to pick one, but the sooner you pick one, the better for staff because they will have, they will want to work with you on a lot of these things that we're trying to kind of help you with in the setup.
Like I said, if he's willing to do it with, with making it clear that, hey, he can survey senior staff. I mean, I think that's completely different than having you actually there. Then go, yeah, that's what I would pick is him.
Well, I'm happy to reopen that conversation with him. He sent me a pretty thorough email, just very respectful, just said he's not the right guy without that. But if you want to call him directly or some smaller subcommittee of you want to, you know, once you talk to him, he may work or he may not work. It's up to you.
Does council want to go that route and at least ask him? And if he agrees, then go with him. Or if not, we'll come back and look at other options.
I support that.
Question, Counselor Rutter. I am just wondering if we set a smaller subcommittee than we're... Per your suggestion, those folks would be then making, coming together and discussing it further and then moving forward on selecting the facilitator before we come back for another meeting so that when we get to the next meeting, there, a lot of these decisions have already been made.
And I don't know how you'd want to set up subcommittee up with decision authority or not, but I think it just allows things to move forward.
Right. That's kind of what you're suggesting.
Yes, and whether they make final decisions or they just kind of keep moving some of these variables. There's just a lot of logistical variables to pull off this retreat. And staff feels stuck and this really depends on what you all want. So, yeah.
Thank you. Just clarifying. I've opened all other ideas and I think it'd be interesting to have, for what it's worth, I do think that it would be good to have Dave Mercier be a facilitator if he's available.
I agree too, and I don't want us to take up any more time in this paralysis of analysis just going over this. Can we just vote on a couple of things and give Marin the answers she needs to move forward? So you want to, Tom?
Or at least call him tomorrow at the latest.
I think you have directive if he accepts that, we'll go with him.
Yes, so we'll reach out to Dave Mercier and say if we allow for SMT collaboration on surveys, pre-surveys, if he would be our external facilitator and I'll get back to council about that. Our other recommendation concerning agenda topics, proposed presenters and the goal of the retreat was for council to form a subcommittee of two to three city council members to coordinate the city council retreat agenda and remaining retreat details with an external facilitator. Otherwise, I think the questions that I had have been answered.
We've already, all of us, haven't we submitted our suggestions for the agenda?
So we got basic information around goals. So we, we got basic information around goals and the mission of the retreat. It's up to council if you want to condense those, the goal of the retreat and the mission that you want to, city council to focus on for the next two years. And I can, of course, give, my goal was to give all of the notes that we had conducted from the surveys to the external facilitator in order to organize an agenda.
Yeah, that, that would be our preference is we hand over all of your input to them and let them take that forward. So, yes.
With a good starting point.
Well, then we don't need a subcommittee. Then it's a subcommittee retreat, not a council retreat. We've all put in who we want to facilitate it. We all have put in suggested topics for the agenda. So do you, don't have any two people that submitted the same topic? You can't come up with four of the top, the top four topics?
If we wanted to condense council comments into just four pieces of, of consensus, then I can do that. I just didn't receive that direction.
So are you saying, my fellow counselors, that this retreat is to address the city survey? Or is this retreat to find out what council's goals are?
The retreat is your retreat and we're just trying to help facilitate.
I'm asking the council.
Oh, excuse me, I thought you were looking at me, I apologize.
I think we were using the survey to base where our goals were going to be.
Because I don't remember discussing that on city council.
I think comp plan was a topic that we wanted.
So according to the survey, it was the comprehensive plan, the city council, the community survey, excuse me. And then you also wanted persons to be present, so the police chief, planning commissioner, county commissioners, as a member of the comp plan firm, a member of the WRF, Water Resource Management. You also wanted a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats analysis completed. And so that was direction, just based off of comments. But I wasn't sure if you wanted staff to prepare those items and those presentations and schedule those persons to attend, or if that should be left for an external facilitator.
Yeah, I believe, your call, but I believe, let's see if we can find a facilitator that can interact with you all directly through email or however, whether they come to this meeting or not, and, and allow them to take it from here. Should we, we'll reach out to Dave and any of you can be on that phone call if you choose, as long as it's not a quorum. And let's see if we can line him up. If not, we'll be back and you'll have to pick a facilitator.
I think a trained facilitator should be able to put together an agenda based off of the things that we submitted, yeah.
Of what we've already submitted, thank you.
Do we need a motion or are you clear?
You have directive?
So my direction, as I understand it now, is just to reach out to Dave Mercier and see if he's willing to be the external facilitator.
And that includes any, well, any facilitator that we end up getting would build the agenda based on our survey responses.
Correct.
Yeah, just want to.
That's what I want to clarify.
Based on our.
Survey responses.
Survey responses.
Right, not the city survey.
Just to build the agenda.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, okay. Just trying to get everybody on the same boat, all right.
Then, yes, I believe I'll be back. Here, I'll be getting back to you about Dave's response.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything else from council on this? All right, moving on, item nine A, youth liaison reports.
Hello? Hi, so a big topic of discussion right now in the youth world is the potential school board decision to move bus times back. So they're thinking of changing the bell schedule so that the elementary school will stay on the current time schedule and the high school and middle school will move back to eight thirty or later so that they can run two bus routes. So the city, or not the city council, the school board is, currently has a survey out. It's going to be out till the 26th. And so families will vote on whether or not they think this is a good idea. But the main concern is that like, it's going to impact sports, it's going to impact after school clubs. I know a lot of my peers have work and that's going to affect their work schedules. So it's just a lot of, it's up in the air right now, but that could be a potential change coming up for us. Yeah, and so some things that we are doing as well is interact, kids are putting up flags around town for President's Day. So you'll be seeing American flags up around and about. We're also holding a row for Joe in May, just to continue fundraising for the Rotary Youth House because they still don't have as much money as they'd like in order to build that. Sunshine Festival, we also have a whole bunch of volunteers helping with the Sunshine Festival in Squim. And Walk for Water, Walk for Water is coming up, that's a big thing that Squim High School does every year. We raise money, we walk for water to raise money for a well over in Africa. This year, it's about $5,000 that we have to raise. And yeah, we've started asking businesses and asking the Rotary, and we're well on our way to that.
I had a quick question. As far as the Joe Rants Fund, are they going to wait till they get the entire bucket of money before they move ahead? Or are they going to start some preliminary programs? Or do you have any idea?
I don't have any idea, I'm just raising money, trying to raise money, I don't have any involvement with that.
Okay, thanks.
We could inquire to the Rotary Club about that. I know that we did raise $75,000 out of the, I don't remember what the goal was, but I think they definitely do have to have a significant amount of funding before they actually start building something.
I'm okay with you not checking into that since we're getting into the end of the school year anyway. But it would seem that there's going to probably end up being some kind of program director that makes that thing work eventually, I assume. So, okay, thank you.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Quite a few items here tonight, I'll quickly try to read my typing and get through them. As you are well aware, Mike Hill has formally accepted the position to be the next Chief of Police pending Sherry's retirement. I just wanted you to know, I've received a lot of great public comment in all the social channels as well as personal emails and conversations. So just really pleased with the community's positive support of that exciting appointment. Tied to that will be, will be honoring Sherry's service on December 26th, which is your next council meeting here, there should be a formal proclamation presented at the 26th.
Do you mean February?
Excuse me, what did I say?
December, I think.
Oh, thank you. I'm reading, I'm reading February, yeah, you, you can stop me incorrectly anytime, anytime, thank you. Yeah, no, on, on your very next city council meeting, which is February 26th, excuse me. And then two days or three days after that, on the 29th, there's going to be an open house here for her and an invitation to the community and whatnot. So we'll send you a formal email invitation for that, as well as Mike Hill's swearing in ceremony, which will be on March 1st here in the council chambers in the afternoon, working on some of the details to, and we'll get back to you and make sure you're invited to that as well. I did want several, several of you have reached out to me individually and asked about the Squim Bay Lodge. I wanted to let you know, we've received a signed agreement to the city's normal agreement with, for that service. And so that will be on your city council agenda under consent next meeting on the 26th as well. So thank you for your support of that. Also, I think you'll hear more about this from Harmony, but I did want to thank Sharice for running down to AWC Action Days with Harmony, some upside of that. So several things came out and I'm not going to take your, your talking points, Harmony. I know she's really, she had a great experience, you'll hear about that in a second. But what, one of the things we got from Harmony's first day down there, she said, hey, I just heard about this student liaison scholarship opportunity through AWC, it's for 2024. We received that, I don't know, to Wednesday or something, the deadline was like Thursday. So Maren jumped on that with your help and I think Georgia applied for that. She had to fill some things out, we had to fill some things out and that got submitted for $3,000 for her support in the scholarship. So that could be, I don't think that's been granted, but we at least applied and we'll see if we can land that for you. So that's exciting. I guess other things having to do with Action Days, I would just encourage you all to continue to read. We made sure that all of you were on the AWC email listserv so that you should be getting their updates, their e-newsletters and whatnot. There's a lot of hyperlinks into that, there's Bill tracking, there's, they have Friday webinars that are interactive and they kind of update elected officials. So just, I would just point you to that. We are, I am forwarding, you know, divorce legislative updates as well as the NOLAs, but lots of opportunities on the AWC emails and websites. Couple just real other quick things from the city manager office. I wanted to congratulate Christina publicly. She recently got appointed to the WCIA Risk Pool Executive Risk Committee, which is really huge. So we're in a risk pool with some other, with other cities. And, and so we, it lowers our premium and, and we're in this group. And to be on the executive committee will allow us to have great opportunity to look at data and, you know, kind of have the insight. I don't want to say insight scoop, but to have a, a nice perspective. So thank you for Christina, for willingness to fill that role. And I've got some other things, but this is the last thing from the city manager office. I did want to just call out Anthony, I know he's back here behind some closed door. There was a time when IT was not as smooth as it has been for, I don't know, almost a year now. And I just want to thank him, he's here, he hides really nicely behind the scenes and makes all of this work. So it's not without its complex processes. And I just wanted to thank Anthony and the IT department for the fine job they're doing with, with our public meetings. So a couple of things from other departments, let me go quickly, communications, marketing. We do have our first meeting scheduled with ETC, so they sent us raw data from the resident survey. And we could, we could go through the questions, but it wasn't the executive summary or report, nor was it training in their interactive software. So that's coming up on the 21st and so we'll get closer to that. And, and part of our, part of our contract with them and Scopus Services was a presentation to both city management team and to you, so that should be coming. Also from Barb in, in communications marketing, I think we may have mentioned this before. You know, we just updated our website, it's still, we're still tweaking it, work in progress, but it's much better, cleaner, cleaner, clearer. But also we found out as a part of that process, there's software, there's, there was a different additional package we could purchase through Civic Plus, which is our vendor, called Moncito, I think. And they, it's a software that scans our website and makes sure that it's ADA compliant. And so it helps with color blindness, it helps with wording, it helps with any hyperlinks that are broken. Anyway, it's, it's really a, a nice thing and we went ahead and purchased that. And we've had some public comments thanking us for that as well. And I, I wanted you to get credit for supporting that. And you'll also see that we're moving forward with a different vendor. I'm trying not to list the vendors' names, but we do have a vendor that helps us do e-newsletters. And we did see in the survey that 48% of our residents were interested in moving from paper to an e-newsletter format. So we've been practicing for the last three or four months, you've probably been receiving those from Barb internally to our employees, but we'll be moving to, sharing out with our residents as well. Quickly moving along here, I wanted to thank DCD Department, they, and Public Works, I guess. They, we had our quarterly contractor developer kind of update here on Friday morning. It's really well attended, they know that, you know, if they'll come, we give them an update on everything that both departments are doing that have, that have to do with actions that would impact them. And then there's question answers and whatnot, it's just super impressive. You're all, you know, invited to any of that. But it was wonderful to see our team really moving things forward and, and even additional things to make the whole process of development much simpler with some schematics and color things and whatnot. So we're hearing that from our developers and I want to thank Barb and DCD for moving that way. You also probably are interested in knowing that the Hearing Examiner, RFP, is out and that it will be open for another two and a half weeks and then we'll be closing that and picking a candidate from that. Yeah, I guess from HR, I wanted to recognize Timmy Wright, who was selected as the new chief operator of WRF. And that's a big thing, John, you know, Christensen was, has been managing that for some time and he's now moving into Pete's position, who will be retiring in several months. And so we just needed some changes there, so. And I'm thankful for HR pushing all of us to get our annual performances done. So that's not involving you, well, kind of is with me, but we've done all of the rest of the 90-plus staff. From, from the Police Department, Andrew Wagner was promoted to an open sergeant position and some, several of you know that or know him, and I wanted you to be aware of that, great guy. And also, Sherry wanted to make sure you knew that we are part of the county emergency messaging system. And they are moving from Code Red to Everbridge. And so we'll be making some announcements and letting people know to, you know, to sign up on that app soon and making that kind of a communication campaign so people know how to get early warning messaging. And finally, from Public Works, several, three of you were here last Monday, we had a nice luncheon, very nice PowerPoint, I hope you all appreciated it. And then spent three hours touring the city and some of our things. So I wanted to thank you for attending and, and thank my staff for the work that they put into that. I heard it, I wasn't able to jump on the shuttle with you, but I would, I heard it, they really appreciated your time and your interest in questions and all of that. So I could probably stop there, I've got other things, but I know I've taken a lot of time. So any questions from any of you? Thank you, Mayor.
All right, moving on, the city council reports, item nine one, discussion regarding committee briefs. And this came up during our agenda setting on Tuesday. Just regards if we wanted to visit, if we want to continue with a formal agenda item for committee reports, particularly for committees that have their own agendas that get posted, planning, transit, arts, things like that. So that's what the talk was at least Tuesday, so we're bringing it to council for consideration on what we'd like to do with it.
But that's an interesting idea. I didn't realize all of the agendas that we report on are already.
Yeah.
We have access to.
Yeah, for one.
But not what they discussed.
Yeah, I mean, during open comment, you can always give your own reports and stuff if you wish, but more is, do we want an official agenda item for stuff like that?
It's fine by me if we skip it.
I would also be in favor of not having it be a set agenda item. I'd further like to suggest that if one of us have a report to give from a committee that we've had some interaction with, that we think the council, you know, we should bring the council's attention that we perhaps follow the same discipline that we ask of staff and prepare, like, something like the cover sheet at a time that lays it out and gives us something to look at and interact with before, kind of an ad hoc report that hits all of us without any input.
Agreement with that.
And I'd be open to just, if it's pertaining directly to Squim, even if it's just your notes from a committee, if you just send that to the clerk to send it to the rest of council, that would be good enough for me, unless there is something, you know, if you need council's guidance for something, for an agenda item for a committee, like that's, that to me would be different. And in my mind, that would need to be brought up either during open council discussion or the committee briefs if it's still on the agenda, but I'm open. But I'm open to removing it from the agenda, the committee brief section.
I'm not in favor. I'm going to be blunt here. I value I find it very helpful to the greater discussion that we have a standing item and that there is that kind of like, okay, I've been to this committee and now I can come and give a really short synopsis. And I think that it is helpful to our discussion and our dialogue. I think it's also really helpful to the public that comes and watches. I yeah, I'm not I'm not a fan. I yeah, and I think that, yeah, that's where I'm going to leave it. I'm just not a fan.
I would say, man, it's not getting rid of that. If you want to give your report, you know, open council discussion, you can give that report at that point.
Well, but if we leave it on the agenda and we ask, are there any committee reports? Then we and no one has a committee report, then then we move on. But if but if we leave it on the agenda, I think it's a really helpful placeholder for that kind of discussion and that kind of dialogue. Either way, thank you for hearing me out. And that's what I think is really important about being on council is that we all speak our mind. I think I think it would be helpful to leave it on. Thanks.
Any other discussion on this topic?
I also think it's important to leave it on there to remind us to communicate with each other. I think we bring our own perspective to those meetings. And some of those, some of the titles for those meetings are liaisons. So we need to be liaising. Like when I was on the Arts Commission, I would bring things that I knew were going to come before us to make sure that you knew ahead of time what was happening. And that's kind of what I was expecting from community briefs. And I think the word brief should be heavily remembered when we talk.
I want I thank you, Vicki. I kind of reason I hesitate, I'm not a super fan is there is so much detail, there's so much content, there's so many things happening across the county that are that inform everything that we do to be good servants of the public. And I think that keeping that space on the agenda does allow for us to come and give a brief. Here's what happened. If it's and again, we can reiterate that it be brief so that the information is being conveyed to our fellow counselors while we're all here to talk to each other in an open public meeting. Because then if we leave it up to, oh, well, I really, really want to talk about this. I need to make it a thing and then prepare it. And I think that there is already so much of what we do that is tied to that sort of process. So I don't know. I'm for me, thank you again for hearing me out.
Any other comments? We want to do a show of hands on who would like to keep it as an official item. Want to do that? Or do we want to voice vote what we'd like to do?
Either way is probably fine, just to see if we can get a consensus.
Show of hands of who wants to keep it as an official item on the agenda. And those that would like to remove it as an official item? Five to two to remove it as an official item.
Still use the open discussion time for the same thing.
Absolutely. All right, moving on. Item 92, House Bill 5090 in our local updates. So I guess I'll kick this off. A council should have received the county's draft reply, which I had Matt or the clerk send out mainly because of its complete opposite of what we as council sent to them. So I think it's important. We need to discuss what our next steps were are going to be in regards to their reply.
Thank you, counsel. Per Brandon's direction, the city manager's office looked into historical discussion regarding the 1590 ILA. So I'm really just here as a resource to answer any questions.
I think one of the biggest issues that I take from it is that there's no local control over the funds, that without the ability to of this council to spend, access that money to spend on Squim projects is something that I think needs to be in any agreement.
They waiting for us to actually sign it?
This is just a draft that I received, but I want I want to hear what council's thoughts are before we move or anything else. So.
You know, Tim is sitting right there. Okay, I agree with you.
I'll make a chance to repeat myself. I think that you say local, and I agree with you. But local is county to region. If there's a 200-unit place that gets built the other side of Carlsberg, it helps us just as much as downtown. So I think, again, the word myopic is tunnel vision. And when you look at just your borders, you're not thinking regionally. That's your choice.
I think my biggest concern was how there are. I haven't heard about a lot of developers setting their sites on Squim, but I have heard a lot about developers in Port Angeles. And so I think my concern is that the funding sources of 1590, worst case scenario in my mind, all of that funding goes to the other side of the county. And so my biggest concern is that there be hopefully something built on this side of the county also. However, we can't really put a dollar amount on that or we can't put, you know, like for so many projects on that side of the county, we want something on this side of the county because that can't be. If there's no developer, then they can't promise that, right? So.
Well, it languishes in committee for whatever they decide. And it doesn't necessarily doesn't set a dollar amount that, you know, we have to have X amount spent. You know, it just gives us the ability to hate. If they say a Habitat-type project comes up, we can act without it going, like I said, languishing in committee forever and with no action.
And it's my maybe I'm wrong. Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't somebody hopefully will know. But it's my understanding that because it is partially Squim-funded, that we would like that's the understanding that we would be able to do that, to ask for funding if a certain project comes up that we want to fund with that money. Is that?
So according to discussion and from what I understand is that the member of the Housing Solutions Committee would be able to offer input around 1590 funding opportunities.
Who's our representative?
Me. And it's interesting being on that committee because lately, for the last few meetings, I think they're every other month. But for the last few meetings, they've been working on an application process where agencies or developers can request 1590 funds. But there hasn't been a whole lot of opportu. Of course, I could say anything under the sun, you know, as the voice for Squim. But when they're talking about working on an application, there's not much I can say of like, other than is your project on the east end of Clallum County or the west end? You know, so there's there's not much room for me to say a whole lot at the meetings that I've been to. Does that make sense? Yeah.
Mayor, I was gonna we have two people here that were on council when this came up, right? Tom and Brandon? How do you guys remember it?
I remember that we simply had a
I remember we simply had a discussion and I believe a vote that we would let the Clallum County centralize the funds and management knowing knowing well that we would have a representation. And my understanding at this point that it's probably going somewhat reasonable, although, you know, it's not a lot of dollars in there yet. So I think the money that's come in is probably three Cedar Ridge homes. I mean, it's not a fortune yet. And I think that I trust that the county, which includes us and also east of us, would be incorporated into that spending.
Again, it goes back to efficiency with me. If it's languishing in a committee that meets only every other month, it and, you know, what's the point? Again, do we act or do we leave it up to external forces in this? I'm okay if it, you know, for the most part, going through the committee. But I just want the ability to if something comes up that I'm not waiting two months to even begin talking about it when we could do it next council meeting.
And I apologize, they're monthly. I had to look at my calendar. I think I was on that vote, too. And the the approach was, one, it was a very heavy lift for us as a city to be able to be the admin processor of the funding. So that was a big, big issue. And then the other approach was a more regional effort since, you know, people that live in Squim, sometimes work in PA, or a lot of people that work in Squim, live in Port Angeles. Did I just say that the right way? And and so it's no, you know what I mean? So so it's just more of a regional effort, being able to check all of the boxes that we're able to check. Like, yes, we're doing this for housing. We're attempting to get all this funding. We're attempting to reach out to, you know, developers or all these things. Habitat is a big part of that, you know? And so from what I remember, the big approach was a regional effort. Is that helpful? Okay.
So I think our concern is that regardless of what we wish, what is happening is the housing is ending up in PA, on the other side of PA. I know you're disagreeing with me, Tim. I can see you back there. There I will have opportunities. And I want to make sure that we're able to take those opportunities. I think, you know, the Peninsula Behavioral Health built the Don View Court in or they remodeled it in Port Angeles. I'd like to see us do something like that here in Squim. I don't think it's fair if people are low income, they don't get to live in Squim, they have to live in Port Angeles. So I really do want to see us bring some things to here. And I think maybe it'd be good to let Tim talk to us about that.
You've come up to the microphone, Tim. And while he's coming up, I will say, too, that I'm under the impression that I know that we are making every effort that we can to approach housing and housing needs. But it's also not a race. It is a very consistent marathon effort.
Very nicely put. The other thing is, is that with the county has just put $500,000 worth of ARPA money into Habitat within Squim. We are currently working on Fifth and Fur with Behavioral Health to redo their house over there. That's going to be about $250,000, $200, $250,000. So we are putting money within Squim. I want council to know that, that you know what? And when you look at, Rachel just put it very well, you know, and one of the things that you know what? We're receptive when things come along, but you can't push. And this, the 1590 money has very and the 1406, both have very, you know, tight regulations as to what you can do with them. And you know what? We want people building throughout the whole county that you know what? We're getting money from Forks. We're getting money from here. But you know what? And if there's something in PA that's going to work, one of the things with the application that just came out is the fact that you know what? That PA needs to be putting into it. You know what? So that everybody's benefiting, not just the county using their money that's coming from outside in. But we want to be working for low income within the whole area. And I just kind of wanted to make that, you know, let you know that what is going on within there and that we are working with Squim and looking at it.
And I really appreciate that, Tim. Is that some council or some committee updates that we should have gotten to know that those projects are happening? I kind of knew about the PBH one because I'm on the board of directors.
That's kind of still like. I just I just saw the architectural rendings for the house on Fifth and Fur today. So it's going to be.
Yeah. And also the there's things that we could do to help support that. I know the city of Port Angeles did a lot to help with Don View Court, and they worked really closely with Wendy Sisk to make that happen. So we're going to want to know and help out with that. But it's good to hear.
Yeah, I don't remember those items being on the agenda.
So those are those are new. And this is a part of the new grants. They were pursuing a RFP methodology for releasing the monies. And now they've moved to a quicker, more efficient grant process. And those are in queue, at least the PBH one is. I will just add, I don't want to sway opinion, but I do meet with Tim monthly. I do meet with Todd monthly, and I do meet with Mark Ozias every other month. And they all are very conscientious about the housing here and about their role in trying to support the eastern county. And so I've been assured that, that, you know, but that's been it's been very positive and collaborative. The other thing that I've heard from Sue, our finance director, is that the county can produce reports for you on how much is collected and how much come in. So you there is a slight reconciling, although it will take many years to try to, you know, reconcile some years. It might be more or less. But you you can see the collections, a dollar piece of that, should you wish, in some type of report. I'm sorry, Vicki.
Well, I just want to make sure that we know about these things. So what's going to be the process going forward that we know about these things? Especially if we're not going to do the committee briefs.
Well, the I don't know, I'm trying to. When we're out at the Housing Solutions Committee, the I'm trying to remember the agendas. They're very regional oriented. And I don't think we're do you know where Fifth Avenue is?
One of the areas that you, Rachel, will be able to bring back is that we have the registry for the projects that are what's going on where and that with, you know, what'll be going on there. And that as the projects come up and they get looked at, that they will be added into the registry. And so we will have, Rachel, will have access to what's going on at, you know, any point in time. And that's what we're working on through there. So she'll be able to come back and make that report.
Cool. That's great. Thank you.
A report for everybody who puts into that fund, not just Squim. It's the communication that that makes us feel like there's some transparency. Right now, we don't feel like there's any transparency.
My apologies. I mean, the whole registry looks across countywide as to what PBH is doing. And like I say, that if anybody would like it, I mean, it'll be it's it will be included in our packets.
I think going into the conversation, one of my it was kind of along the lines of transparency, but also wanting to make sure that there's still an ongoing partnership between the city and the county. And I that really helped alleviate any of those concerns. So thank you so much, Tim.
Anything else?
I'm going to say something that people probably won't be happy with. It's bad enough that Port Angeles decides our trash rate without any communication with the city of Squim. Tim, that's why we feel like nobody's communicating with us. It's just, you know what I mean? That just happened like what, a month ago? So we. So we, we just want to be included. It's not your fault, Mayor, and I know I'm looking at you because you're there.
I can take your ire.
But you understand what I'm saying, right?
Yeah. Let's blame Tim on this all the way rate increase. That's, that is a different subject. Yeah, that's, and we, that's a different discussion and we have a lot of information on that as well. So, Mayor, I don't know if you want to mention, so the county is interested in meeting with some representation from the council to work on. We, we sent an ILA to them per Loles. You saw that in the cover sheet. They sent a counter. I don't know how staff can be in the middle of this much longer. It really just needs elected to elected or at least some conversation. Tim has been willing to serve on that on the county level, as has Todd, as has, I don't think Mark wanted to. Randy, I think Randy Johnson said he would, so that there is three of them that are willing. And then if you, but this is up to you, Mayor, however you want to proceed. I just wanted to let you all know that they're willing to have a, a meeting with, with some representation.
So I'm having them reach out to me to expedite information getting filtered down to councils. That's one of the reasons why I have it on tonight's agenda is if I go forward or whoever goes forward, we know what council would like to do. So if we want to do more, you know, two more, or I can do it by myself, it's up to what this council wants.
Is this a situation where there can't be more than three of us?
Yes.
Okay. I thought, yeah, I thought so. I'm, I'm interested in learning about this by participating in such a group. But I am by no means up to speed, so I wouldn't want to take a seat away from any of you that have been spending a lot more time on this over the last couple of years.
And I'd be supportive of a joint meeting and I'm willing to attend said meeting as a liaison of the Housing Solutions Committee. Or Deputy Mayor, or both.
And all of you should be on fairly equal grounds relative to the entire packet that you saw. There's a lot of information that Marin pulled from the beginning, from the inception. So if you really read up on that, we kind of stated things often even more than once for you all.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate all of that information. It's helpful.
Good, I'm glad. Thank you.
Very helpful. Thanks.
Thank you.
And I trust you to go ahead and my schedule can't handle any extra meetings right now, so.
Is council okay with me and Rachel? And if somebody else would like to join in as well?
Yeah, I'm willing to participate if it doesn't take somebody else's seat. That'd be more effective than I can be. So and of course, it's schedule dependent. So you'll, you'll let us know what you get back from them. That's where your
Yeah, they'll go through me and I'll just make sure it gets down to you guys.
And the meeting will likely be a Tuesday?
Monday or Tuesday, just depends.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And I've, I've been coordinating with Lonnie Gores, who's the administrator for the county. So if you'd like, I can continue to coordinate or Brandon? Okay, absolutely. Thank you.
Anything else before I move on? All right. 93, Community Conversation on Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. Harmony?
Hi, Jim.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim. He's a nice guy.
All right. Good evening. So item number 9C3, the Community Conversation on Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. This is just an update for council and that we, that me and Vicky met and had a really great conversation about it. We are planning, we are reaching out to the members of the prior Community Conversation on Diversity, Equity and Inclusion to see their interest in participating in another one. And I'm going to pass it over to Vicky. This is really just an update to say that we're talking and conversations are happening.
Yes, and I agree. We had a great meeting and went back over all the work that had been done before on the community conversations and what happened. There was actually a plan of how to address some of the, the ideas that came out of that. But also now that COVID's over, the, those, that was originally set up to do in-person meetings and really have different meetings at different times and dates so people could come and, you know, have a really safe place for people to express what they're feeling. I know there was a community survey, but a lot of times people who need to tell us something might not do that in a survey because the questions don't actually fit with what they want to say. So really looking at the capacity of the community members to come back and help do what we first planned to do. And looking at the other partners in the community, like I know the library at one point was really interested in the YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, the tribe, and, and seeing, you know, what their capacity is, if we can pull something together. And also, you know, doing these proclamations, that is diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. And I think that's important that we keep doing those. I've already reached out to the League of Women Voters for next month because it's Women's History Month. And so they're going to help with that. But we're really looking for our community to work with us. And, you know, that, the Black History Month proclamation, two community members worked on it. It was a little bit hard to get them going, but it was great to have Mr. Brown come and to receive the proclamation, but that is also part of this work. So we just will Harmony and I will keep working with the community and seeing what we can come up with with them.
Thank you, Vicky. That's all we have. Thank you.
Anything from council on that? All right. Item 94, who's up for next agenda meeting? Who would like to attend?
I think the 20th, 2 p.m.
Yeah, 20th.
And it's a Tuesday?
Yeah. I don't know if I need to say it every time, but I plan to go to everyone, so I don't know.
All right. 95 open. Anybody got anything?
I followed up on the bus fare for Hurricane Ridge. It will remain $1. And then the straight shot to Seattle is, will remain the same and all the other bus fares for one year, one calendar year will be fare free. So there'll be zero. It's, we'll see what happens at the end of the year. Thank you. It's, it's turned out to be very, very popular. They have guidelines in place. You cannot just get on the bus and ride it all day. You have to have a destination. They have a method for having people get off if other people are waiting to get on. So they, they've tried to anticipate everything that they can, but people, it's very, very popular. So people are thankful. Hopefully next year, not '24, but in '25, they will be able to expand the Pingo Route in Squim. It's the shuttle that comes to wherever you are. You only wait no more than 30 minutes and it will take you to your destination. It's in the all of Squim, but it does not cover where I live. This, this, it's, city limits are larger than the actual service area downtown. But they're hoping to expand that. In fact, they have to keep on adding vans and drivers. That's how pop, and it runs on Saturday also, not on Sunday. Thank you.
Just a quick mention that the Sunshine Festival is coming up and there's still a sign up sheet with some openings. One for help decorating the Guy Cole Center on Friday, March 1st. Help decorating Cary Blake Park with lights on Thursday, February 29th. Couple spots open for that. A trainee for interactive light experience in Pioneer Park. And assist with volunteer and performer check-in is open. And it looks like that's about it from the community if they're interested, but there's also openings for the City of Squim Emergency Management Coordinator position. So just wanted to let the public know about that, let you guys know about that if you're interested in volunteering. Thank you.
Mr. Hughes, that was my other question. Who is our Emergency Management Coordinator?
Well, currently it's Dennis. So I didn't, or Sherry, or do you know Mike? I don't know what I didn't know that that's open. He doesn't, he's part.
So for the, it's just volunteering for just a few certs? Sorry, I didn't mean to say like the coordinator. I just, yeah. Cert, help, please.
Right. Probably for that event, maybe some kind of coordinator, emergency manager with, that work with cert.
Or maybe like parking or something like, yeah, they're great.
Cert, cert is amazingly involved in that and puts, you know, hundreds of hours in, in with parking and with help.
Dennis is the coordinator? Not just map your neighborhood. He's a coordinator for everything?
For the city. He's our, he's our city and he's part-time. He's, I think, 20 hours a week or something like that and coordinates, yeah. And I meet with him, I meet with him every month and, yep.
And a fun perk, if you volunteer, you get a T-shirt.
So I just had two things. One, on Friday, maybe it was, was it Friday? One earlier in the week, I spoke with Representative Kilmer for 20 minutes, real quick meeting. And we discussed any topic, but I wanted to focus a little bit more on economic development. So we talked pretty much in length on the labs expansion and what that could look like for jobs coming into the area. And the second thing was, I was trying to figure out ways to be more visible approach, but whatever you want to call it. So Matt, I'm thinking of kicking, restarting Coffee with the Mayor at some point. I know that city manager used to attend that as well. So I can chat with you about that in future. I know that me and Harmony discussed writing things in the, to the paper in our personal capacity. So if anybody wants to do anything like that, let me know. Bounce ideas out back and forth about how to be more out there for the community, more than willing to listen and see what we can do.
Go ahead.
Just wanted to let everybody know, last, last year, there was a lot of times when I was on travel for business and I held off taking on more of a workload, ran for reelection and I think I was unrealistic. My, my capacity is shrinking drastically in terms of my business overseas. So my last day will be March 31st. During the time between now and then, whatever resources you can use from me, talk to me, tap my brain, let me know. Okay? And it's been a pleasure.
I want to give the synopsis on AWC City Action Days, but I'm also, I'm also bummed that you're leaving. That's thank you, Tom. I'll definitely make sure to shadow you at every opportunity to get about finance committee stuff and we, our community is losing a really great counselor, but I wish you all the best. Does anyone else have anything before I dive into AWC City Action Days? And I'm going to keep it really short, I promise. I'm making it sound huge.
I just was clarification. Sorry, Brandon, when you comment about writing the paper in your personal capacity, you and Harmony, what, what did you mean by that? Are you?
So we're not taking a stance that it's not an official stance by council and/or staff. It's me specifically speaking as myself. So on any topic, you know, I, I've written to our state representatives regarding like 24, 14, or 2114, you know, in my sole capacity, I'm urging you to vote for this, you know, stuff like that. So I'm not taking, it's not an official stance of this council.
I think when you say as a citizen of the city.
Pretty much, yeah.
I just wonder if any of us cannot can escape the position that we do hold in public perception.
Well, like I said, I, I write it as, as mayor or as council, but I'm saying this is me speaking as me, not as a representative council, unless specifically authorized by council to represent council. Which is why I asked, you know, a few meetings ago, do you want me to approach those commissions solely by myself, or do you want me to represent council in that? So you, you can do such things. Just make sure, like I said, you're not taking an official position at council and/or staff on those.
I don't want to steal your thunder, Harmony. I'm just wondering, Mr. Cole's still here and I, did we have more questions about his public comment? Is that something that we can talk about? Did we give good direction to staff for what we need to understand?
I may not be here when it comes up, but I think just like things in the past that happened 25, 30 years ago, I just need a chronology. And I think everyone does a chronology. And then go from there.
Was there an email we were supposed to get?
It's my understanding that an email has been sent to council some time ago, approximately a month or so ago. Sarah, you might remember. Yeah.
I'll go back and look.
However, nonetheless, while I appreciate council's request for a chronology, I don't know that we're going to be able to provide that. Is that this was not our issue. So as an initial matter, I would respectfully request that council be very clear on what it is that they're after besides a chronology and what level of review that council wants us to spend on this. According to your council rules, staff, council does not get to direct staff for more than two hours worth of work without the city manager's approval. So without knowing, you know, more of what it is that you're after on an action that took place nearly 30 years ago by a state agency. I just, I don't know what type of effort that is going to look like from staff's perspective. And I just want to make sure council understands that while we're happy to do what council directs or is directed by the city manager, I, I don't know what that is going to look like. So.
May I say something? If there are any discussions in between someone employed by the city and Mr. Cole, any permits issued, anything like that, city permits.
That wouldn't, and, and this is where I need clarification because it's my understanding Mr. Cole is talking about this transaction that occurred 30 years ago and help getting that back. But if you're talking about permits, that's a, that's an entirely different conversation and there are a multitude of permits and transactions and emails and everything else with Mr. Cole generally over the years.
Yes. I don't want you to do more than two hours on this, but we have no control over what the Department of Transportation did and didn't do, or what they said or they didn't say. But if there's anything that we need to know of a city employee that said something to that family, or if the city issued a permit, then that would be helpful to council.
Issue to permit for what?
The situation that happened. If it's our water reclamation and it goes through his property and he lives in Squim.
I don't believe it is our water reclamation. I think those words are being used interchangeably.
I think those questions that she's asking is our confusion. I'd just like to know if, if we're players in this. And I don't, I don't think an advocate is going to give us those milestones, but I just want to make sure where we played in this.
If that is your question, right, whether or not the water reclamation facility is our facility, I feel fairly confident that we can determine that in a short period of time. Anything beyond that? Anything beyond that, I don't know that we would be able to answer that. I do know that some very vague memories in reviewing various reports and things, it was, and I believe this is what Mr. Cole had mentioned earlier, that the water reclamation facility was basically mitigation as part of WASDOT's bypass project in the 90s. And it wouldn't have been a city project, but I would have to go back to try to confirm that through some of the various reports that we may have.
And the same with, if the water's being filtered through his property without his permission and his property is in Squim, does that not involve us?
Not necessarily.
Okay. That's what we need to know. I mean, I know, I don't expect you to have any of this information at your fingertips.
Thank you for that.
Okay. Mr., can I call on Mr. Cole? Brandon?
I think if we do, we like specific questions and, and move along on the answers. Otherwise, I think getting 10 or 12 key points that you can research in a couple hours would be more helpful, but that's up to you.
That's, that's what I intend to.
And it's, it's so, from a very, very broad viewpoint of what I'm reading and what I'm understanding, I'm understanding that this is a DOT domain under their jurisdiction, so to say. And, what else was I going to say? And passed the statute of limitations that had anything to do with what happened in 1998. Based on those two understandings, I do not believe that there is anything we can necessarily do to help rectify any injustice that Mr. Cole may feel about the situation.
I'm not saying we have to act on it. I'm saying who has the accurate information? Does that make sense?
And I'm saying that if it's Department of Transportation's domain and passed the statute of limitations, it's out of our hands.
Right. So we get a letter saying that from the law office? I'm sorry, city attorney? We can't tell a citizen we're going to look into facts and not look into it.
I, I just feel like it's a waste of time. If it's not our domain and if it's past the statute of limitations, those are two driving forces behind us not being able to do anything.
Is that for sure? Yeah. If nobody has that information back there in the back of their brain, then how do we know that?
It is not a waste of time to make sure you're doing the right thing, ever.
So please forgive the fact that I'm belaboring this point, but is council looking for something that the city can do? Or are we simply just looking for a, a brief summary of what we believe happened based upon the documents that we have? Because those are very different things.
We, we don't, we don't know that we can or cannot do anything until we gather facts.
We don't have any information. We want to make sure we're doing the right thing because we're responsible for the city. So in order to make a decision, we need information. That's all we're asking for, please.
So I just want to circle this back. Maybe we should bring Jeff back to the mic to help us narrow down a, a list of things to look at and research? Or is that, is, I believe that was something that someone said? Is that what we want to do?
As it relates to the City of Squim, yes.
Can we ask Mr. Cole to come to the mic? Everybody okay?
It's okay with me.
You?
Thank you so much. Jeff Cole, Willow Creek Manor, president and resident of Squim, 577 West Quin Bay Road. Thank you for the opportunity to bring some clarity. There is direct relationship with the City of Squim, because when this whole thing started in, I believe, 96, 97, before it made state Superior Court in 98, the city manager, I believe at the time, had a beef with my uncle, Myron, at the time. There was collaboration between the city manager, the DOT, and someone at the DOT, and someone at the Water Reclamation Center that had a concerted effort to target that property. The city and where the Water Reclamation Department has already lost a lawsuit for the contamination that they've done to Squin Bay and had to extend their discharge pipe farther into the bay. When I did the development for the city, or for Willow Creek Manor, I resubmitted an already approved plan that could have been done in a month, two months, with all the current code addressed. Charisse had me go through about two-year process and through that process to get re-approved and an already approved plan, we did two extra water, what is it? Mitigation reports or water, two different water reports, two different traffic studies. Through all of the reports, the, the guy that did the water report for me said, you know, the City of Squim has 17 pages of adverse effects that they've got on that property. I have reached out to the tribe. If the tribe doesn't want to provide any information, I've reached out to the city. I get two pages redacted. I've seen your file. Charisse showed me a file on that property that's like that thick. I have a file that's that thick. So there are emails, there are conversations. One of my very first conversations with the city attorney was this frustration. And Christina, if you remember, you had said, yeah, there were some handshake deals and some things that you were brought here to clean up. And unfortunately, you know, I appreciate reducing liability. I think that there is a way to do what's right, to return what was taken incorrectly. I'm not even asking to clean it up. I'm saying if you give me the property back, take the, take the easements that you need, I'm still on that deed. And as far as the statute of limitations goes, because we've just wrecked, or just found evidence of, of contamination, current contamination that's being done by the Water Reclamation Center, the statute of limitations doesn't apply. I'm on that deed of the DOT property and the City of Squim is very, can at least help me to get through, because the last 10 years of my association with the City of Squim has done everything to bankrupt me from even fighting that thing. Because I did a YouTube video, Land Grab Family Farm, I got some 30,000 hits. I had one roadblock after another. The thing you're signing, the easement on that traffic circle, we have, you know, Squim celebrates the, the irrigation festival, longest running irrigation festival in the United States. You are sitting on the crown jewel of water rights in the entire United States and you're defecating on it. You walk back there in that property, it's pristine except for it smells like sewer. You can see oil and garbage bubbling up out of the ground from, from their pipe that they've run along. I can walk you through it. And so as far as, all I'm asking for is a collaborative effort. We can fix it. We can make something. And you know, we, we need housing. I hear all this talk about affordable housing. I'm the largest private owner of, I believe I'm one of the largest private owners of, of land in the city limits of Squim. I could put 100 workforce housing in tomorrow. If you really want to do something to bring workforce housing, low income housing, I sent us, I walked into the city and I asked, I said, you guys come to me, well, we can figure something out right now. I want to retain the, the history of our farm. I want to retain the history of our water right. And I think we can do something collectively and not just give lip service to all this stuff. It's just.
But it's, it doesn't sound like you have any actionable items. It sounds like you need to have this discussion with the Department of Transportation.
Well, I have. And I, so the problem is, is you work very closely with the Department of Transportation. And the department is, they, they switch their roles. They've got maps of that facility. They know I'm on their deed. I've sent them a copy of the wells that were going to be planted on there. They're arbitrating or they're, they're arguing even the validity of my placement of wells. I've been so focused on trying to bring the only new master plan community in the city limits of Squim since 2017, and it almost bankrupted me. I haven't had the fight or the money to go in and address this issue to take back what was taken, because I was just trying to retain the farm. I bought a farm and it's been everything that to self-fund, just the development. I spent two extra years that I should not have had to. I spent over a million dollars more money that I shouldn't have had to done, because you had all the reports, or the city had all the reports. So I've had lip service. From the day I even bought the property from the estate, I met with Chris Hugo, was, who was the Public Works Director at the time, and I showed him a plan. I wanted to do a rest, farm-to-table restaurant, a storage facility place, a RV park, and then keep the farm. He said, oh, Mr. Cole, you have all that. We can do commercial work in the barn. I've never seen a city fast-track zoning change so fast. I hired Zenovic. Before he, I, I closed on a property, hired Zenovic, and before he can even submit it for a binding site plan, they'd already changed the zoning to not allow it to R48. It's just, it's been one challenge.
Were you given a certified letter saying of the zoning change?
I got of the zoning change after the fact, yeah. I, I met with Chris Hugo. He tells me, that's great. I fly back to California at the time. I hire Zenovic. By the time they got the plan, it took them months to get the plan done, but there was multiple owners just like me that were trying to get stuff through that were fast, that missed their opportunity because of how fast.
It sounds like you need to make a formal document request, which is not something that city council can do.
I made a formal document request to the City of Squim and Christina had given me back literally three pages redacted.
Then you need to make a formal document request to the Department of Transportation.
And I have all the respect for Christina. I think you do a fantastic job. I, I don't mean to be harping on you, but I mean, unfortunately, she was the face that I got when I.
No, Jeff, and I, I completely understand. And so if I, and I'm reaching way back, but I believe you when you said that we only provided a few documents. So if you want to make another records request, I am happy to sit with you to try to figure out what it is that you're want, that you want, so we can word it in such a way.
That would be still helpful.
Because we do have, as I mentioned early, we have a lot of permits, we have a lot of things. I just am unsure what it is that you're after. So maybe one of the things that we should do is we should schedule some time where we can sit down and we can inspect some records. And then when, if we see something along the lines of the types of things that you're after, then we can craft that records request and perhaps get some information that way. But I, I wasn't here during the, the Chris Hugo times that you're talking about, certainly not in the time before that. And I don't know that anybody here has been either.
That generation is definitely dying. And I appreciate that, Christina. I will definitely take you up on that and I, and thank you for that offer.
Absolutely.
I, I went to the Water Reclamation Center early on and, and the director at that time was very familiar of the history. He knew my uncle, he knew that, how they hate, the, the previous guy hated my uncle, knew the relationship between the, the DOT and the city manager. There was a, I'll, I'll apologize, I don't want to keep rabbit trailing you guys, but thank you for the opportunity. I would love to put together a letter of what we're looking for, because there is definitely documentation. And I even got a letter, I did that letter or that video, I got a, a email back or a call from the Institute of Justice, and they said, you have a very viable claim here. You, if you have any evidence supporting that, and we have plenty of evidence supporting everything that I've said to you, I would love to put something in. And all I'm asking for the city, instead of liability, I'm just saying, help me. Hey, you know, here's, here's one of your residents that's saying, you guys have probably more authority or input or push to the DOT to say, hey, this guy's already on your DOT. We've got a, a, a contamination issue going on right now that needs to be stopped and rectified. And how do we bring this together? Because if I can get that property back, 60 acres, I would put housing. We could collaborate on something that could directly affect the housing shortage in Squim. And there's a reason why you have a housing, housing shortage in Squim, because nothing gets passed. And $30,000 for, for impact fees, I mean, I can go on and on and on. Now, this is just so backwards for our city. We need housing.
Thank you, Christina.
Volunteering to meet with him.
Jeff, if you want to reach out this week with some times that you're available?
Oh, that'd be great. Anytime that you're available, I will, I will make it available.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else from council?
No.
All right.
With respect, sorry, with respect to Harmony's desire to update.
Very quick.
I would like to ask that we postpone that until the next meeting, unless there's something in your update that we need to decide tonight.
Oh, no. I don't know. The only thing to note is that I have swag. There's like some pens and conversation hearts. If you want some pens or conversation hearts from the conference, I've got all the books. I'll leave them in the council office.
Paul was a conversation.
Yeah. Yes. Here, there was even a bag, that's all. Yeah. It really, honestly, the AWC website is great, all of the above. And yeah, I can also make copies of my notes and just forward them to council. It's, and we all know about the AWC website. It's really, yeah, that's all. It was great. I had a great time and it was very worth my time. That's all.
Can I add one thing? I regularly in Olympia have met with a lot of legislators over the last few months about my work. And when I say I'm from Squim, they're like, oh, the manufactured home parks, yes.
Yeah.
Doug Wright, Chris Walker, they know that. So they've made an impression.
Anything else?
Come get some swag.
All right. Those that don't want to go home, get centered, censored next meeting, so let's go home.
I second that.
Okay.
Who's opposed to that?
Not I.
Yeah. All right, we adjourned.